Please rise and pay respects for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Move the roll, please.
Noel.
Here.
Ballard.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Spiz.
President.
Bailey, Hunwick, and Berger are all absent.
We have a forum. I take a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda, January 12th, 2023.
Motion by Noel, support by...
I'll second that.
Support by Ballard. Any other discussions about the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Agenda has been approved. Any conflict of interest to be pointed out at this point, from anyone?
No.
These topics, seeing none, so we'll move on. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from the December 22nd, 2022 meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the planning commission regular meeting minutes of 12:22:22.
Motion by Noel, support by...
I'll second that.
Support by Ballard. Any other comments, questions about the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Minutes have been approved. Anyone here for public comment for items not scheduled for a public hearing? Anyone? Be alert, be alert. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any commissioners' comments at this point?
None here.
No comment?
I'd just like to make a comment, just make it well-known that we're not going to be able to use our higher technology, and I think we can get by the night with approval of the work that we have to do. If there's any objections, I think the chair would like to hear them now.
Seeing none, great, thank you. Alls I'd like to say is I'd like to thank Supervisor Curtis and the township board for reappointing me to another few years on this planning commission, so thank you very much. And I'd like to wish everybody Happy New Year, good to see everybody. I'm looking forward to a good 2023. Okay, I don't believe we have a public hearing. No unfinished business, moving on to new business. One of the fortunate things we get to do every year is election of officers. So we'll start with the chair of the planning commission. Go ahead. Anyone have any nominations for chair of the planning commission?
Mr. Chair, I had some contact with other members of the board that are here tonight, and it was an unanimous vote that we leave it status quo, the same that we had last year. So if I could do a lump recommendation that we keep the parties the same as we did in 2022. Susan, will that work?
No, you need to state who you're nominating for chair.
All right, then, Mr. Chair, I'd like to change my...
You can do it as a slate, you just have to say who you're doing for the position.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Berger for the chair.
Okay.
The vice president would be Mr. Hunwick, I believe. No, I'm sorry, excuse me. That would be Mr. Spiz, sorry.
It's okay.
And the vice chair would be Mr. Hunwick.
Secretary.
Secretary would be Mr. Hunwick.
All right, so we have a motion by Noel for chair for Mr. Berger, vice chair for Mr. Spiz, and secretary for Mr. Hunwick. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second by Mr. Ballard. Any other further discussion or any other nominations out there? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Those three have been appointed. Thank you very much. Then I'll move on to item 11B, which is Miller Amendment for Final Site Plan. Do we have the petitioner in the House?
And Mike Wisnasek with REC Engineers, and I'm representing Meyer. I'm the engineer for Taco Bell, but Meyer had me go ahead and submit the site plan to you guys as well for their modification to their parking lot so that they could facilitate an outlot for the construction of Myers. We did the parking count, I submitted the numbers, and I'm hoping that you guys find that agreeable. I don't have anything more to add to what we've submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
If we have questions, we'll call you back up.
Sure.
We'll move on to consultants. Zach, I'll let you go first.
I will try to do as quickly as possible. So this got entangled with the Taco Bell site plan because the Meyer was not developed with pre-ready-to-go outlots, so the property lines will be changed to create the new lot, and part of the property that will be used for Taco Bell is within the Meyer parking lot. Because of modifications to landscaping and because of need for this body to be the approving authority for reducing parking, that's why it's here. Otherwise, minor parking lot modifications would go through administrative review. So you guys are the last stop. There will be no changes to any of the other structures. The buildings are going to be same, the gas station, the main building. Only the parking and the landscaping within the area for the Taco Bell will be affected. So the circulation within the parking lot will be changed a bit, so when you come in by the chase bank, it's going to keep going straight, it's going to hit the Taco Bell, make left, and then go back to the front of the property and track around. There will be several of the landscaped islands in the parking lot that will be removed. They will be replaced with similar ones identifying the edge of the space there. And I believe in the letter from the township attorney, it talks about the access easement. So even though the Taco Bell property would be touching M24, or yeah, M24 Lapeer, they're not going to allow them to do access, so access for Taco Bell will be through there, and that requires access easement agreement between Meyer and the Taco Bell. I believe the attorney's looked at that and is generally happy with it, but you've got the letter. So the big thing for you is parking. Current site provides 887 parking spaces, which includes 28 very free spaces. There are 36 spaces that are used for corrals, cart corrals, and 86 for banked parking, so today, the potential maximum parking lot would include 1,009 parking spaces. With the amended site plan, there'd be 772 parking spaces with 28 very free spaces, 36 for the cart corrals, and 86 for banked. If you do all the math, that would be 890 parking spaces. Based on the size of the building and the outdoor garden center, it should provide 964 parking spaces. So if you do the math, that's 74 fewer parking spaces than what your zoning ordinance says. However, the planning commission can approve deviations from the parking. You can sometimes require more parking or allow less parking with a couple of criteria. And those criteria for you to look at are the anticipated number of employees, customers, residents, or other users of the facility, demonstration of need by petitioner based on comparable uses at similar locations, proximity to existing areas where shared or collective parking agreements are possible, and the availability of non-motorized transit or other alternatives to vehicular transportation. So the Meyer, the napkin says it, material says it's been 10 years, closer to 23 years by my recollection. If you look at the aerials, the area where the proposing isn't regularly used for parking, it's just the other side of what there is where it starts to back up, so it should not affect the regular parking. It will feel tight when you drive in there because instead of seeing half the parking field empty, it's going to be closer to 75% most of the time on that side. So you get to determine if you want to approve the waiver for the reduced number of parking spaces. The essential services and utilities will remain the same. They're going to be going across property lines, but their easement agreements worked out for that. Then the next question is landscaping and screening. So the zoning ordinance is pretty rigid. It says if you have a property line that's commercial, you need to have a 20-foot green belt around most of those property lines with certain number of trees based on how long it is. So if you do the math, if you have commercial versus next to commercial, you should have 40 feet of green space with trees on both sides. That's not what they're proposing. There's going to be green space on the Taco Bell side and in some parts on the Meyer, but not the full 20 feet, and the Meyer side isn't proposing to put any trees along the new border with Taco Bell site. There will be trees within the new landscape islands in the parking lot, and again, the planning commission can approve modification from landscaping waivers if it's consistent with the intent, if there are unique characteristics with the site, if it's necessary for pedestrian parking or vehicular circulation, and if or if the public benefit intended by landscaping standards could be better achieved with a plan that varies from the strict landscaping standards. Let's see. The one note we have for the planting list is that it does specify ginkgo trees throughout, and it should be clarified that only male ginkgo trees, not that there's anything against female ginkgo trees, but they tend to drop more fruit and flowers and stuff on the parking lot, which isn't really good for the parking there. No changes to the site or to the signage, and that's what we've got. It's a modification. We talked about the waivers for parking spaces and the green belts and the number of trees, and there are a couple of potential conditions on page 10 of the report for you to consider.
Any questions for Zach at this point?
I have a couple, two questions.
Go ahead.
The berm does not get removed, the berm stays the way it is?
We'll address that with Taco Bell, but the berm would be removed with their site plan.
And then the second thing is that in the past, they have had outdoor sales in the front of that parking lot around the Fourth of July. Is this going to limit the amount of sales they could have on that parking lot after Taco Bell goes in?
It's... They wouldn't be able to put up multiple fireworks tents. There'd still be room on the north side closer to the gas station to do...
And they could meet all the requirements?
Yeah, they'd still be able to do that there.
Any other questions for Zach at this point? All right, thank you. We have a pleasure to call you back up. Engineer Sharp?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Just real quick, going to diddle a lot, diddle a lot of what Zach already said, but in general, we don't have any problems with this. You should have our letter that's dated December 29th. With regards to the site, as you said, there's no real building improvements, but the improvements that are being proposed do not affect any of the sanitary sewer that's out there. They do not affect any of the water distribution system. There will be some minor storm sewer improvements, but those will be addressed as part of the Taco Bell site plan, so we're not too worried about that. With regards to the pavement sidewalks and curbing, I don't, this is an amended site plan. Zach's going to, I'm going to kind of defer this to him, but site plans require that a safety path be placed across the front of a property. I don't know if this pertains to that or not in this particular situation. No, it does not. Okay, so no issues there. And really, that's all that we have on, it's pretty straightforward on this one. They're redoing the driveway, but everything that they've shown us, so they're going to be the standard.
Any questions for Engineer Sharp? Seeing none, thank you. Any from fire department?
No.
No. Okay, I think that all the letters in the, are in the packet, and the attorney letter was also in there, and they recommended we kind of handle these together. So I don't know from a, from a motion perspective. Trustee Noel, do you have two separate ones written up? How do you...
Mr. Chair, we have two separate motions for items on the agenda, which would be 11B and 11C.
Okay, so we can handle them separately, but together. I think everybody's kind of taking into account that they're joined.
Yeah.
Okay. So for the petitioners, you have seen all the, all the letters, and I know you were kind of managing for Meyer, but no, no concerns with what they've put in place so far from your perspective?
No.
So are there any commissioner comments with the site plan amendment for Meyer?
I have one question. Zach, this, I'm not hung up on the berm. I'm just, we have a berm coming, and we're going to taper it down, we're going to go into Taco Bell's property, and then it's going to go right back up is what they're going to do it?
Yep. So it's one of the things I, I mentioned in the Taco Bell site plan is that the current plan shows changing topography of that berm outside of the Taco Bell property, which isn't prohibited, but if you're starting to put shovel in your neighbor's property, they need to say that's okay. Yep.
So we're all good?
Well, they have the option to modify how they're going to bring down the berm, or they can provide the grading easement from the neighboring properties.
We go with what they've worked at.
Yeah, we're working with Chase.
Yep.
And then, of course, Meyer's going to go along with whatever we need to do, so.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
If there's no other comments, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a...
Please.
I move to approve the resolution to approve the amended to the final site plan for PC file number 22-013, commonly known as the project name Myers FSP Amendment, on the basis that the site plan meets the criteria set forth in section 8.5 of the zoning ordinance, and as to the permit deviation, deviations from the requirements of section 8.6 in parentheses will off-road parking requirements by use in a parenthesis of the Oxford Township zoning orders contingent upon the following. The applicant's submittal of revised plans addressing stand, stand, standard deficiencies as set forth in reports submitted by the township consultant and administration, and two applicant obtained approval for a waiver of a development agreement approved by the Township Board of Trustees in accordance with the Township zoning ordinance, consultant reports, and reports generated by the Township Administration as referred to herein shall be attached to the above meeting minutes dated 12, January 12th, 23.
Good motion? Support?
I'll second that.
I give support to Mr. Turner for this one. You've been beating him to the punch. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Zach?
If I may, just, in recording, secretary, can you confirm this? You guys would need four affirmative votes to approve it.
No further discussion? I was just going to do a voice vote since there's only four votes.
That's fine.
So all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Let the record show the motion passes unanimously with four votes. Thank you. So we'll move on to item 11C, which is PC 22009, which is the Taco Bell final site plan. The applicant, Great Lakes Taco, is applicant in the House.
We're here. You want, you want me?
Go ahead.
All right. So, you know, we're here for the site, final site plan approval on the, you know, Greg's, Greg's the architect, and he's actually the applicant, but, but I'll go ahead and talk. So, you know, same, same thing, we're, we're here for final site plan approval on the, on the Taco Bell. We've submitted plans, and there's, there's a lot of comments on it, and we've seen them, and we've reviewed them, and of course, you guys are going to discuss those. I don't have anything more to add at this point, but as the discussion goes, I have any other questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Consultants' reports, Zach?
So this would be the final step before the planning commission. Preliminary approval was granted on August 25th of last year with a couple of conditions. There have been some minor changes to the site plan, some massaging to get the building to fit with, with utility easements, and a couple improvements to landscaping, flow of traffic, those types of things. All right, so the proposed site would meet the minimum lot area in the frontage. The Taco Bell uses a permitted use, fast food in the C2 zoning district, no natural resource issues to be concerned with on the site because it's been developed. The proposed building would meet the developmental standards for setback, lock, coverage, and height for the zoning district. Access and circulation will be through the shared drive with Meyer. We talked about the access easement that was done there. The configuration for the access points has been tightened up a little bit from previous iterations. It looks like it'll be much better for directing flow, and so cars aren't kind of going all over the place, so that is very appreciated. There will be the new safety path going in. As we mentioned, the berm is going to be coming down, so there are a couple of paths that either get easement from the neighbors to bring the grading on their site or bring it into yours. A couple of comments for circulation is no parking fire lanes as may be required by the fire chief, and approval of the easements for the grading there. There will be appropriate amount of parking with parking dimensions consistent. Now, the one thing for parking is they are proposing spaces 10 feet wide by 18 feet deep. Your zoning ordinance says by default, it should be 20 feet, but you can reduce it down to 18 feet if it's against a curb and it's going over landscaping where there aren't trees or shrubs that it's going to hit, or if it's over a sidewalk that the sidewalk's at least seven feet wide, so you still have five feet of sidewalk. And in all the cases where it's proposed to be to 18 feet, it meets either of those criteria there. I'll let Supervisor Sharp speak about the essential service and utilities, except for, I'll mention, the materials for the enclosure for the dumpster. Your zoning ordinance says it should match the building. The current site plan is proposing the HDPE plastic lumber pickets. The building is using horizontal hardy board. You can approve a modification of that, but by default, your zoning ordinance would prefer it to match the building type. There is going to be landscaping screening around it. The landscaping throughout the site is generally consistent with the zoning ordinance. The only modification that they're requesting for is, so we just talked about the green belt and the trees along, based on the length, so they're requesting modification to have a smaller green belt next to the chase bank site where there's a lot of green space, and to have fewer trees along that greenscape. On the chase bank side where there are those existing maturing trees, those will remain, so there's, there's still kind of a buffering between the commercial uses there. Lighting, photometrics are looking good. The thing that we mentioned over and over is that they're proposing LED bulbs. Because it's 2023, your zoning ordinance doesn't allow that, but in the past, what we've done is allowed LED with the condition that the color temperature is consistent with the approved bulbs. Right now, the site plan indicates 4,000 Kelvin, which is a very, a very bright white. The consistent with the approved bulbs would be 2,400 Kelvin to 3,500 Kelvin, so just changing that with a note on the site plan. The location for a freestanding monument sign is shown, some signs on the facades. We don't have all the information and unable to determine compliance with all the standards, the height of the area. That can be done as part of separate sign permit approval. The one thing that you guys need to bless is the proposed, the two proposed menu boards for the ordering lanes. It's a weird quirk that you guys need to say it's okay to put those there. It meets the size and the height for that, and I hope everyone knows what a fast food restaurant is, what a Taco Bell is. They do meet the number of stacking spaces. There are beyond that. It doesn't require special screening because it's not adjacent to residential property, and then we don't expect a problem with sound from the speakers because it's next to a Meyer. And that's what I've got.
Questions for planner? Anyone at this point?
Just real brief, Zach, real brief. You spoke about LED lighting now in the zoning ordinance. Can you elaborate on that?
Yep, so your zoning ordinance is almost verbatim with what's in Orange Township that says you need to have metal halide fluorescent, incandescent, or these types of lights. And the concept was, back when that was written, is that you get a consistent color temperature throughout, so you don't get really red, orange, and really bright white. And it hasn't been revised since LED bulbs became a thing, and so by you guys providing that opportunity in the past with the color temperature, you've been able to achieve the intent of the zoning ordinance of keeping the color temperature consistent.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What about hours of operation? Have we had any definition of that?
I will let them speak to that. We do have a note in the lighting section that if they're closed overnight, then the lights have to be dimmed or turned off during that time, so that would be something for them to define.
Okay, yes. All right.
Do you want to define that first?
Okay, Engineer Sharp, what are your other questions?
Again, you should be in our letter. That was dated December 29th, working over the holidays, to get this to you guys in a timely manner. Just a couple of high points again, they're going to need a bunch of permits, you know, so erosion, MDOT stuff, but we can handle all that during the engineering phase. They have submitted the legal descriptions for the parcel splits between Meyer and Taco Bell, and everything appears to be in order there. With regards to the sanitary sewer, they're going to have to have a sanitary leave. The sanitary sewer is located close to the Meyer building itself, so they'll just need to get an easement from Meyer to be able to, to convey that from their property. There's going to be a grease trap and other stuff, but anyway, to convey the sewage from their property to the, to the sanitary sewer, but there is, there is ample capacity in that sewer. The water line, same thing, they're proposing to tap the existing 16-inch water line that's out right on the MDOT right away, so they'll need a permit from them. They're going to extend a water line up and put a fire hydrant in. The water service, we did have a comment on that because wherever they were proposing to tap it, it would have put the shut-off box and everything out in the pavement, and it's just not a good idea to have cars driving over that all the time, so we asked that they move that maybe to the green belt area or look at a different alternative possible for that. But again, the, the water system has capacity for that. Stormwater runoff, again, they're connecting into an existing storm line that's already there. It was already approved as part of the Meyer, and I think part of the overall development in that area, so no additional detention ponds or pretreatment structures or anything like that are required for that. Let's see, dumpster, everything looks good with that one. Zach mentioned that they're putting in an eight-foot wide safety path. We're going to have a gap kind of nowhere right now, but maybe eventually it'll get extended, and overall, everything looks pretty good on our end, and a few items to clean up during the engineering phase, but other than that, we're all set.
Okay. Questions for Engineer Sharp? All right, anything from the fire department?
No, they've met all of our...
Come on, I want to get you to come up here and talk.
Okay.
Name and address.
I didn't let you up that easy.
We have no further comment. They've met all of our...
Yeah, please introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Fire Marshal Frank, fire department. They've met all of our previous requests.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on, hold on.
Excuse me.
Petitioner, any response you'd like to make to the consultant's comments, one being the hours of operation?
I don't know if you want to be 24 here. Honestly, I can't answer that question. I'm Greg Lotzenheiser with All the Architects, and at this location, I'm not sure what their intentions are. I can get back with you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other question? I do have a question for you, or one of you two, anyway. Any comments on the fence from you guys?
No.
I just, I, maybe it's just me. I'm not a big fan of those fences, because, I mean, historically, especially in cold weather, you know, you see them driving down, telegraph and driving or wherever, but it goes in and they just crack. I'm just worried about winters when plows start pushing dirt, or snow, into those. They're not, at least historically, I haven't seen they're not very durable. And I know hardy board is a lot more durable than that HDPE, at least in my opinion.
We could certainly revise that enclosure to reflect that. I know that was a concern with, with Chase as well.
Yeah.
At one point in time, so if that was your decision, we could certainly revise that.
What is the, what is the commission? I prefer that, but I'm one person that's certain.
Well, I agree with you. I think it ought to be something more structurally sound, even masonry in a lot of cases.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, but, I mean, I just, I don't like the HDPE because I don't think, over time, it's just going to break down and drag.
Right.
And then it becomes an ice storm.
Yes.
And then it's a garbage enclosure, and then you can see everything, which I don't think Taco Bell would like to see, and I don't think it possibly would as a community.
Yeah, we're all about durability as well. We've done it masonry before and painted to match the building, so whatever, you know, your preference would be.
I'm sorry, I, that may be a, a various, like, I maybe had overlooked that at one key point. I was always under the impression that garbage, you know, the garbage containers were always masonry blocked on the outside, you know, typically, and so that's right. Maybe I just overlooked that, that it wasn't?
It's, it's very common in many zoning ordinances to say that has to be masonry.
Yes.
Your language is a little bit different, that it says it should match, complement the, the main building.
Okay, that's, so I'm, so that's where I had maybe made assumption of, of knowing that, or thinking that they were all masonry, and I didn't realize that they weren't. So that was something that I would have looked, so.
Fortunately, we're out of the 90s, and so it's not going to be an Ephesus enclosure. That would, you look at it wrong, and it would collapse.
So we're, Noel, we're to using the lap board that's style that's on the building for our dumpster enclosure?
We could certainly change it to that, yes, if that was your choice.
Is...
Or a masonry painted to match the building as well.
But if you ask my opinion, I would prefer the masonry.
Yeah, I would too. I, I think the masonry is more durable from the standpoint you're going to have dumpsters in there, and when they run into that with a truck to pick it up, and it pushes against the back wall, I think you need the structure.
Or they slam that dumpster right back into it, right?
Those drivers aren't that careful, I mean. No, we, we agree. We do more masonry type enclosures. We've got all of our restaurants and anything else, to be honest.
Yeah, I...
So.
All right, Mr. Chair, for point...
Yes, sir.
For my clarification, is that in your write-up, or do I have to talk about that separate if we were to make a motion?
It would be good to add masonry painted to match.
Yeah, I would agree, because he does mention it, but he doesn't ask for...
Masonry, yeah.
Painted masonry? Did you say painted, sir?
To, to match.
Okay, the building.
Yeah.
I understand that. I just, I have to make sure that I need to repeat right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion if there's no other questions. This is a long, you might want to sit down and break. I move to approve the resolution as assembled to approve the final site plan for PC file number 22-009, known by the project name Oxford Township Taco Bell. Such resolution shall memorize the planning commission's decision determining...
Such resolution shall memorize the planning commission's decision, determination, and findings made on January 12th, 2023, and shall be memorized, all conditions placed on the final site plan approval. Final site plan approval shall be additionally conditioned upon the following. One, applicant.
Sorry. Excuse me, sir. You said memorize, it's memorialize.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, I just wanted to.
It's memorialize.
Yep.
Applicant, I'm on item number one. Applicant's submittal of revised plans and application addressing stated deficiencies as set forth in reports submitted by township consultants and administration. Number two, applicant providing all information required by the township zoning ordinance as noted in the township consultant's report and/or township administration. Number three, applicant obtaining approval for a land division and obtaining an access easement over the Meyer property that is satisfactory to township administration. And four, applicant obtaining approval for a, for, or waiver for a development, development agreement approved by the Township Board of Trustees in accordance with the township zoning ordinance. Consultant's reports and reports generated by the Township Administration as referenced herein shall be attached to the approved meeting minutes dated January 12th, 2023. I will also add one point on the bottom of this is the masonry enclosure around the waste dumpster shall be painted to match the building, uh, coverage design.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
All right, I have a motion by Nold, support by Ballard. Any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Did we cover everything?
I think so.
Do we need to mention the, the menu boards at all in that?
So this is kind of a layered nuanced thing. So the, the motion that was prepared by the attorney references the resolution, and if you guys approve it, it's been our interpretation that you're okay with what's on the site plan unless you specifically pull it out or mention otherwise.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
I believe during your report, you mentioned that we specifically mentioned something about the boards.
Yep, if it, but if you, so it's kind of, if it's okay unless you say something else similar for the, the parking spaces and the landscaping waivers, unless you guys say no, it's our assumption by you making the motion that references that you're okay with it.
All right, understandable, thank you. Any further discussion then? All in favor of the motion as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed. Let the record show that the motion, as you announced, will be approved by the four present members.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I do have more questions before we move on to item 11D for Zach. On the previous one for 11B, the waiver for the parking spaces, is it the same assumption that we approve? I just wanted to make sure if I had a note to go back to that, and we did. All right, thank you. Moving on to item 11D, ordinance review committee 2023 priority list. Thank you, gentlemen.
So the ordinance review committee has had a very busy year, and I think Vice Chair Spiz asked after last meeting, are we actually going to get all these things done last year? And we did, except for the signs, but that's because the attorney told us not to do anything with it. So we got everything on the front page except for that and one thing on the second page. So we have to come up with a new list of things to do.
LED lights?
Yes, that's our second one. So the thing that they propose, and I'll just touch on it really lightly, but if anyone has any conversation or questions. So signs are back at the top of the list. The new township attorney said you guys really ought to look at that sooner rather than later. We're about 85% done with it. We did a lot of lifting before we were.
Why did they say that?
They got spooked because there is a case in Troy that seemed to indicate tighter restrictions on what could be done by local units of government. The new attorneys have said that you're way out of compliance with Reed versus Gilbert, and it's okay for us to see what happens with that other case.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So we're, we're mostly done with that, just a couple of polishing.
Excuse me, just to interject, a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
How many years have we been waiting for that?
Two, I believe.
Okay.
For lighting, the past year and a half, we've been getting all LED lights, and so we're suggesting, let's just change that section to say you can use whatever bulb as long as it's in this color temperature. The next thing is landscaping standards. So a couple of things that have come up is, are the, the setback or the, the green belts and the planting is really consistent with what you're looking for? You've added many waivers today, so we're going to try to look at making it a bit tighter. The other thing that's of interest is incentivizing tree preservation. So if there are trees on the site, we want to incorporate ways to try to make folks want to preserve them instead of chop them all down and put lollipop trees up that take 20 years to look like a tree. And also some more guidance on species that are desirable and that you shouldn't plant, like the Bradford pear. We're probably going to say, don't plant that unless you have to plant it. Zoning map maintenance, we did a whole bunch last year, the 425 parcels, we got that all done. I think it's a record. Everyone I've talked to in the zoning and planning world said, what? There are a couple more that we've identified, little, little tiny odds and ends here that just when we were doing that massive number, we couldn't get, so we're proposing doing a couple more of those. It's probably going to be on the order of eight to 12. Animal definitions, so we found some inconsistency between the definition section and the regulatory section. If you look back, there were some amendments to the regulatory section, maybe six years ago, and the definitions didn't change to match, so we're, we're trying to get those to match back up. Zoning amendment criteria, so when you guys and then the township board are considering a zoning text amendment or a zoning map amendment, the zoning ordinance that you got doesn't provide you any guidance for decision criteria of what do we look at to say yes or no. So we're proposing adding that in. And then the last one, group one, is state-licensed residential uses. This is courtesy of the state of Michigan. They upped the amount of folks that can live in these facilities or stay at the facilities, so we just want to make sure to update if we need to do it to stay consistent. Then the group two items, ZBA, there's a couple of standards that aren't in there for review of an appeal of a decision. So the fun thing is, as only administrator, every decision you make can be appealed to the ZBA, and we don't have criteria for that, which is kind of frightening, because when, when that happens, tensions are very high, and we'd like to provide clean guidance for the applicant and for the ZBA for decisions. The last one, and this has been in group three for a while because it's a really, really heavy lift, your master plan calls for creating a couple of mixed-use zoning areas. So near the builder of Oxford, it says you should have mixed commercial and residential, and then up north on 24, it calls for a commercial-industrial mixed use. So it's really complex, that's why it's been down at the bottom. We've been banging out a lot of other things. I'll say also, it's partially been addressed right now with amendments that have been forwarded to the township board or adopted for mixed use, the mixed-use commercial Peweties. It would allow somebody to get to the same place as your master plan visions for that. So that's what we've got on here. There was a late addition. Did you want to speak to Mr. Nold, or do you like me? So your zoning ordinance has sound standards in it, maximum sound level based on the type of property you're exporting sound to and the time of day. It has one exception for when you can be louder than that, and that's if you're doing lawn care maintenance. Doesn't have an exception for generators, for snowblowing, for cutting down trees, for all these other things. So Planning Commissioner Nold thought it would be useful to put that up. I believe Ms. Loten distributed to you the sheet of what you have currently, and then a sheet of something similar to what I heard Mr. Nold was interested in, in a draft ordinance I'm working for in Ortonville, just a drive guide. So it shouldn't be significant lifting if you guys are generally satisfied with that or the general framework of that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Collins, thoughts?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I sit on the ORC as well as Bob Turner, and we, we're finding areas within the township that we're doing business as usual, building, expanding, and going about things, but some of the things that we're doing unbeknownst to us are not in our ordinances, such as a metal roof. So when we come across these things, we, we at the ORC are trying to take care of those immediately to avoid situations down the road. The noise is one of them. The way that, particularly with homehouse generators, out of the box, a lot of those generators don't even meet our criteria the way it is today, straight out of the box. So those are problems that have been identified. We'd like to move those forward, to get those taken, those are easy cleanups. We just like to keep going on those.
Okay, and I understand, just for my information, how many complaints have we had about that? Any?
No, sir, it's, it's actually on the other end of the spectrum. I've been involved with Homes wanting to put those generators in, and just for fun of life, I looked at the DB rating, and the DB rating suppresses at 23 feet our, our sound requirements within the township. So I, I'm on the other end of it, and so I decided that if we could suggest it, to take care of it, so people can put generators in without the fear of ordinance, yes.
Cranky neighbor. So it's, you are in a very good position where you're able to start to do like a lot of preventative maintenance in your ordinance, not something that's really broken and crazy. You're, you're able to get ahead of things. You're able to, to fix it before the neighbors complain.
Another one that's not on our list, but we briefly talked about it, is charging stations. You know, what kind of ordinance do we have about, do you put it out next to the curb? Do you have to have it in your garage? But that's future technology we need to address.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, please.
I, I think that, I tried to keep a note of that, what's going on, but, you know, we talked about it, you're right, Bob, and it's just, whoops, you forget.
Yeah, it was like the animal one, somebody said, well, you know, we can keep a horse in our house. What?
I was trying to bring up animals, not the horse, but anything about chickens? I know there was a time where we had a brute coming in.
We had, if, memories, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, you may.
If, if memory serves me correctly, there was a situation the township regards to chickens in R1. It, it went to the, the township board, and the township board did not act on it.
I agree, yes, that's what I remember too. I'm just wondering if it's on our list to consider.
Not that I know of.
Not that I know of, but I'd be more than happy to put that on the list, or to, to have some dialogue in that.
Yeah, just there's some discussion, whatever you decide.
Can we add things to the list as we kind of go along or as we think of things? Can it be, is, or is that list, is that list the list for this year, or is it?
It's, it's.
Trusty Nold.
What we're doing is, we have a, a to-do list from our ordinance group.
Okay.
It'll go through this committee, Susan, help me out here, then we recommend that to the township board.
Correct.
Township board approves it, then it comes back down to fund the ORC to do it, and we can change that throughout the year. This was a, basically a 2022 year-end report, and the things that we like to go out and do for 2023 that we knew about readily available.
Yep, and so it's possible to add things. This past year, the township board added something that didn't go through ORC or the planning commission moving street tree requirement in site condos. You guys have a very robust checks and balances thing. So you guys, as the front line of planning and zoning, are making the recommendation to township board, and they're deciding which ones should get funds. So, yep, you can add stuff throughout the year. It's a little bit longer because you guys do have that robust.
Yeah.
Checks and balances.
Mr. Chair, if I may one more time, I'm sorry, if any, anybody on the board or anybody in the public would like to send a letter to our planning commission to, to look into certain ordinances, I'm sure that we would review that and entertain.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the ordinance review committee, ORC, priority list for 2023 be amended to include the review of environmental provisions related to noise and exemptions, and to be forward this list to the township board with a favorable recommendation.
Do we need to do this last part?
Uh, we have not in the past, so I didn't add that last part.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Sorry.
Motion by Nold, support by Turner.
All, all we need is one more. Approve them, we got it passed.
In clarification, do you guys want to add charging, electric vehicle charging to the list as well?
Well, then I, then I would, yes, I, I could amend this to make sure that we put focus or attention towards EV vehicle charging stations within the township.
That's your amendment?
Yes, sir.
So we have an amendment, do you support the amendment?
I support.
All right, so we have a motion and a support for the amended motion. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed. Let the record show the motion's been approved unanimously, unanimously by the four representatives present today. All right. Yes, sir.
Susan, was that done according to our guidelines?
As far as the motion goes?
Yes, ma'am.
You don't want to get me started.
Okay.
It's fine.
All right, so moving on to item 12, any reports from, reports or communications from committees? Economic development, there has been, have not been a meeting, but there is some discussion going, taking place right now on the need of that committee being at the planning commission versus somewhere else within the township. So hopefully at the next committee meeting, planning commission meeting, let me say it that way, we'll have further discussion on that and more discussion with the township supervisor. Any updates or communication for the ordinance review stuff? Probably what we just talked about. Do you have none? All right. Any additional comments from the planner or engineer or fire marshal?
I would really could say one thing, the ORC had 18 meetings last year. That's a lot. They, they were stuffing themselves with that Little Caesar's Pizza, so send them your sympathies for that, at least.
Chief, please.
Let's see, just as a heads up for those who haven't heard, you guys have pulled off our two-for-one trade. This will be my last day at the township. You guys instead are getting two planners. Alyssa Starling will be in on Tuesdays and Thursdays doing the counter and answering questions, zoning permit reviews. And for the night stuff in the ordinance review committee, you're going to have Megan Mason-Minock. She was a planner, the consultant for Orion Township a number of years ago, so she's got a lot of chops, and my understanding is they're going to be all in the building tomorrow, working on kind of transition plan and giving up the responsibilities. Alyssa has been shadowing me the past two weeks here. I've taken her out, showed her some of the more interesting spots, we're even out to horse country. Should have waited for a non-rainy day, but that might take a little while. So it's been a pleasure, thank you, and congratulations for all the work you've done. It's been fun to get you through all that ordinance stuff that we've done.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I brought some cupcakes, please help me eat some of them.
Thank you. Sure.
Yeah, just a couple things to bring to your attention. I don't know if you heard about this last night at the township board meeting, but they, Legacy 925, they transferred a liquor license over to an entity, it's essentially G's Pizza. So G's Pizza is going to be taking up the space at 925 Legacy. I understand it's going to be a similar type menu to what they have down in, down in Orion and some of their other locations, so.
So they're taking up the whole establishment, not just the section, right?
Oh, they're, they're not taking over the whole Legacy Center, they're just taking up.
Going home for 925.
Correct.
Restaurant, okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding, is that they're taking over, they're refurbishing